Guys, this time we're gonna call the meeting to order. Stand for identification.
Holy Father, I thank you tonight for your goodness, your grace, your mercy, your forgiveness and your love. Father, for the wisdom that you imparted us to do people's business. I pray tonight, Lord. Our fellow commissioner Bradley Jones, Lord, I pray a complete, total recovery for him, for Ronnie Sumner. That you'll touch him and bless him and heal him, Father. Father, Lord, I pray for our military wherever they are, and I thank you for them. Father, I thank you for their families that support them. Father, I would just thank you and praise you, and may everybody in here give you the praise you deserve. In Jesus' name, amen.
The United States of America, to the road which spans one nation under God, indivisible, and ever changing, just strong.
Ask Ms. Hardison for a roll call, please.
Elijah Thomas, Brian Teber.
Yep.
Justin Booth.
Here.
Rick Joyner, Shane Hanks.
Here.
Eric Watkins.
Here.
Terry Pichu.
Here.
Vince Gray.
Here.
Archie Brown. Melissa Fields.
Here.
Bradley Jones. Clint Mathis.
Here.
Mark Dorch.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here. Mr. Pryor just called, was on work duty, and, um, Mr. Bradley Jones called and couldn't be here tonight from a health issue. Number five is the approval of agenda. At this time, we'll take these additions or subtractions. I do have one addition. If you will turn to page number twenty on the Parks and Recreation Committee. Mr. Daniel Perrigo was added to that. We had tons of business and I forgot to add him during the committee. So when we get ready to vote on, um,
He's on.
He's on the current one.
Oh, okay.
Uh, just some of you got them early and this was, and some of you kept yours from the last meeting, so this is, this was updated. And I want to make sure you guys knew that was on there. But that way, we got a lot of park business coming up and we want to make sure we're able to call them. Daniel was left off that and that was my fault. So just wanted to let you know about that. So when it comes to that, you'll have that addition. Motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Grab a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. Number six is the approval of the minutes. You've had them before you. Mr. Chairman, I accept the motion to approve both sets. Motion by Mr. Watkins, second by Mr. Dorch. All in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. Number seven is the approval of the bi-monthly reports. You have any questions about those? We'll get your answers to them. Motion approved by Mr. Dorch.
Thanks.
Second by Mr. Joyner. All in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? Number eight is to approve the internal and external committees of the Stewart County Commission as recommended by the nominating committee. By Mr. Mathis.
Second.
By Mr. Cates. All in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. Number nine is the approval of the twenty-six agricultural committee members.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Cates, second by Mr. Joyner. All in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? Number ten is the approval of the terms for the library board members.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Watkins, second by Ms. Fields. All in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. This time I'll turn number eleven over to Mr. Dorch.
All the budget mentions for one oh one, one seventy-one, one thirty-one, one forty-one were approved by the committee.
Second. Motion by Mr. Dorch, second by Mr. Watkins. This time we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mark Dorch?
Yeah.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Elijah Thomas?
Yes.
Brian Teber?
Yes.
Justin Booth?
Yes.
Rick Joyner? Shane Hanks?
Yes.
Eric Watkins?
Yeah.
Terry Pichu?
Yes.
Vince Gray?
Yes.
Melissa Fields?
Yes.
Clint Mathis?
Yes.
Thank you. Number twelve is the approved of the notaries. By Mr. Mathis.
Second.
By Ms. Fields. All in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. Number thirteen is the approval to proceed with requests for qualifications for countywide engineering. I know over the last couple of weeks y'all have had some questions about this, um, so I'll try to explain it the best I can. We are, um, exploring the fact of hiring an engineer, um, the school system, the city of Dover, Stewart County, going in and looking for a countywide engineer. The engineering process is tough when you get into these grants and procurements and things. It's, it's about a six-week process from start to finish. Um, and, and even then, it may fall within grant bounds and it may not. So I'm not asking you to appropriate money tonight. That's not what we're here for. We're just asking you to give me permission to go in and request the qualifications of engineers that would be interested in giving the city, the school system, and ourselves a bid. Motion approved. Motion by Mr. Dorch?
Second.
Second by Mr. Booth. All in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. Number fourteen is approval of a TCP contract agreement for the time clock services for EMA.
Please. We're trying to go into electronic schedules, electronic timekeeping, payroll purposes. And I've been working on this back and forth with this contract some time now. Not a ton of money, but I'm not asking for any money. Just asking to approve the contract, but, um, contract rather lengthy and Heather Charles. I think another one we could get where potentially maybe in the future we can build on.
Motion by Mr. Joyner? Second. Second by Mr. Pichu. Is there any discussion on this?
Is this only for EMA?
At this time, only, only for EMA? For EMA, sorry.
And total cost for it?
I think the first, the first year is like twenty-four hundred dollars. After that, it gets a lot less. It's like eight hundred dollars. And I've got that money.
At this time, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Mark Dorch?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Elijah Thomas?
Yes.
Brian Teber?
Yes.
Justin Booth?
Yes.
Rick Joyner? Shane Hanks?
Yes.
Eric Watkins?
Yeah.
Terry Pichu?
Yes.
Vince Gray?
Yes.
Melissa Fields?
Yes.
Clint Mathis?
Same.
Thank you. Number fifteen is approval of the resolution accepting the quitclaim deed and agreeing to the interlocal agreement from the town of Dover for the Stewart County Riding Club. Uh, there's an interlocal agreement between Stewart County and the town of Dover. This is what I spoke to you a couple of meetings back about, um, and Dover has agreed. They have, uh, quitclaimed all of that property over to Stewart County. And this will be for the sale of that property to go exclusively on the agriculture building that we're wanting to build on the new fairground and match the hundred and fifty thousand that we just received from the state of Tennessee Agriculture Department. Motion approved. Motion by Mr. Dorch, second by Mr. Teber. I'll ask for a roll call on this also, please.
Question.
Yes.
Okay, eighty-seven.
Yes.
Number one. What stipulation from the town of Dover?
It is. It, it's for development purposes. What they don't want to do is, um, come in and let one of the other state, federal organizations buy that, put it under some kind of tax shelter, not receive any tax dollar off of it for the city or the county. That, that's what that clause is in there.
Who are you playing? I know you're playing on building to building. That won't play it.
That's the plan.
Well, whether it be a ring or anything nowadays in the future.
Yes, sir. What, what, what we're, we have applied the bill for when we got the initial hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for us to build a one hundred by two hundred, um, open-air ag facility. Um, we would like to eventually put fifty-foot, like all the lean-to style on there, um, and have bleachers and things like that underneath it and use it for several events. This is not just, it's, it's the agricultural community, but if, if, you know, if, I don't know, churches wanted to come in and use it or something or something to that effect, the civic groups, the high school groups, if they would want to use it, we're not, we're not saying just agriculture, but that's the reason we're building it. That's the where the money's coming from.
So you're using the money from the sale of this property to go to meet or to match that hundred and fifty thousand?
Well, to aid it. I said, I said match, but what I really meant was aid to that because this is a four hundred thousand dollar facility. Um, and the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, which we can apply for again next year and we're gonna do that. But this is a faster track to get us to where we want to go with that facility. And, um, because to be honest, that riding facility down there is, it's a maintenance nightmare, um, and it, it doesn't serve us the county.
And you're gonna, you're gonna sell this at some sort of public auction.
Yeah, we'll fol, we'll follow the pattern that the county has done typically. We will either sell it on, on one of the government websites or we'll sell it at the, um, courthouse steps. I'll have to refer to Charles and see what's, what's that after we get this part done. If there's no more discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Marty Dorch?
Yeah.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Elijah Thomas?
Yes.
Brian Teber?
Yes.
Justin Booth?
Yes.
Rick Joyner?
Yes.
Shane Hanks?
Yes.
Eric Watkins?
Yes.
Terry Pichu?
Yes.
Vince Gray?
Yes.
Melissa Fields?
Yes.
Clint Mathis?
Yes.
Thank you. Number sixteen, uh, which is page number ninety-three, ninety-four, is to approve a resolution to sell the property known as Stewart County. So that you guys accepted the quitclaim from the city. Now we are asking you to approve a resolution to sell that property. Motion by Mr. Watkins, second by Mr. Teber. If there's no discussion, which we'll be happy to discuss. If there's none, we'll ask for a roll call vote on this as well.
Mark Dorch?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Elijah Thomas?
Yes.
Brian Teber?
Yes.
Justin Booth?
Yes.
Rick Joyner?
Yes.
Shane Hanks?
Yes.
Eric Watkins?
Yes.
Terry Pichu?
Yes.
Vince Gray?
Yes.
Melissa Fields?
Yes.
Clint Mathis?
Yes.
Thank you all. All right, number seventeen is approve a resolution of Stewart County legislative body authorizing the conveyance of any potential interest in real property to G and D LLC. I know about this, but I'm gonna let somebody much more educated than myself tell you exactly what we're asking to do here.
Charles, so if most of you are aware, in behind the bridge, it's hard there. The parking lot belongs to the county. There, to the, if you're looking at bringing it to the right, there's kind of a hole where Bruce Saunders has purchased, purchased. He sold about a half acre to G and D, which is, uh, Greg Arms and Dalton Arms who bought Bridges. So they bought that little hole. Well, there's no deed for that little hole. Uh, there's never been a deed. I think, uh, we had the county, whatever, the issue with the parking lot, had Mitchell Ross's office go through. They never could find a deed to that little hole. So everybody around it really just should give up their, any interest they may or may not have because they can't establish a deed. So the county is on the north or the south side and then on the west side. Bruce Saunders is on the north side and then he's also on the east side. So I feel like it was smart for us because Greg is going to start using that property to make sure we relinquish any rights we may or may not have in that property. Which I don't think we have rights, talking to Mitchell Ross's office. I don't feel like we have any. Uh, that would prevent us from being liable for anything because he has been privileged. So that's essentially what you're doing.
Mister, uh, Saunders came to myself and Clint and, um, asked if the county would have any, um, you know, if we wanted it first. The amount of fill-up, the field, backfill and the amount of drainage that goes down through there from our courthouse, it monetarily, it didn't make sense for the county. Just, it didn't make sense. It, it's gonna be quite expensive to, um, take care of that drainage that goes to the river and to fill that up. So he's passed it on to Mr. Greg Arms.
What, what's Greg?
I feel like that.
He's con, he's contacted me. He, he, he wants to backfill all of that, I think, to maybe move his mulch and stuff, maybe further back to give him more parking lot area back in the back.
I'm doing. This has nothing to do with tomorrow. You gotta do that one. Motion by Mr. Dorch and seconded. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Number eighteen is the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System Resolution to authorize an actual study of determining the liability associated with allowing members with one year of service credit in the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System to establish retirement credit for the time during which such members were employed by a political subdivision in accordance with Title VIII, section thirty-four through thirty-seven of TCA. You guys, this was before you several years ago. If you were here then, um, it, it's some, it, I guess it got voted down for lack of better words. I don't, I wasn't here, so I can't remember. Um, but some things have changed with the TCRS and, and the state, and, um, I was asked when I came back in office to relook at this. I felt like you guys had already voted it down. Well, then I was asked again and I got with Heather and said, what does this consist of? What does this look like for the county? What kind of liability do we have? Um, so I spoke with Rick. Rick was here then, and what we came up with was what liability it is to the county to bring back to you a number is six hundred and, six hundred and twenty dollars is what it costs for the study. What we're asking for tonight is to proceed with that study. And what that is, that'll open the window up for sixty days, um, for the study. I'll bring that back to you. The state will tell us a number. Um, it'll be a percentage point that will go against our TCRS. Um, if you guys feel like letting those folks that will sign up for that, we've had, I've had three reach out to myself. We've had approximately ten reach out in the office over the last five years. That, that's great. So, um, you know, once you have to run it in the paper and all that, you may have twenty, you may have two. I don't know, but at least you'll have a percentage that you will know a actual number that it will cost the county going forward. If you indeed decide to let, um, these individuals buy back their retirement time from when they were with the county. Motion by Mr. Joyner, second by Ms. Fields, and I will take a roll call because this is six hundred and twenty dollars, but it's new money. Okay, sorry. Would this benefit you also?
No. No, I've already, I sold my retirement off. I, when I left the county, I put my money into a Roth IRA with Mr. Van Herten and that sealed mine up. I can't go back and buy mine now.
Is there any more discussion?
I guess a lot depends on the ins and outs of it, like you're discussing right now.
This is just. Right, this is just for the study. I'm, I'm not, uh, I'm not up here for this or against this. I'm bringing this back before the commission. That, that's what I'm.
If anybody joining that will have to bother them later, this is just for the state.
What you're approving tonight is a six hundred and twenty dollars for the study. All right, no more discussion. I'll take a roll call.
Mark Dorch?
Yeah.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Elijah Thomas?
Yes.
Brian Teber?
Yep.
Justin Booth?
Yes.
Rick Joyner?
Yes.
Shane Hanks?
Yes.
Eric Watkins?
Yes.
Terry Pichu?
Yes.
Vince Gray?
Yes.
Melissa Fields?
Yes.
Clint Mathis?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number nineteen is a resolution to establish county courthouse policies and procedures. Since I've become a mayor, some of these have been hot topics and, um, if you go by state law, um, well, there's a couple of state laws, but if you go by one of the state laws, the sheriff is over the duties of the courthouse. Um, speaking with Mr. Joyner on that, um, he felt like in nineteen eighty-two to nineteen ninety, there was a resolution passed. My office has went back, um, and searched the resolutions in the office and we have searched, um, the digital, um, things in Ms. Hardison's office. We never found a resolution at all. So, um, we, there, as far as I'm concerned, um, and as far as the office is concerned, there's nothing there, but we, we didn't, we didn't have any. So state law also says in the same law that says the sheriff has the duty, it says the county commission has the ability to make its county laws. Calling around with CTEST, speaking with Charles on the matter, calling mayors that are around, we are behind the ball on that pretty much. Most of the counties have already went ahead and have, um, their own county resolutions that state what their, um, courthouse, what the maintenance, what the security, all that looks like. So what this is asking you to do is to read over that. I'll explain a little bit about it. So the things that are kind of in the gray area are things like security cameras, um, and like the key system that gets in and out of the courthouse. For the last twenty years or so, the key system has went through our HR department with the county and then it went up to, well, most recently, Mr. Ethan and Mr. Jason Wallace before him, their office to fulfill the duties of producing the cars. After our HR department said, this is who gets one and who doesn't. Um, I'm asking to return that just to that method. That method needs to go through our HR department, except now as a county, we have grown and we have an IT department. And we are asking for that, the key system to go through our HR department. Uh, our human resource manager right now is Michelle. Michelle would in turn, um, send that request to Andrew P. at our IT department and he would be the sole responsibility of those keys. I spoke with Sheriff Gray on the matter as early as today at one-thirty and he feels like I do. We got way too much to be dealing with to worry about keys. And I don't want that responsibility, but I understand that that's part of the duties even well after I'm gone as mayor. That needs to be a responsibility held by the HR department at the mayor's office. The second issue is the security cameras. Security cameras within the courthouse, um, Jason Wallace received the grant, so I'm, I'm gonna say six or eight years ago, but I, I don't know the exact, so I won't even say that. Let me take that back. I don't know when he received it, but he received it for security cameras, um, for the, um, courthouse courtroom mainly and upstairs area. There was, I don't know if it was, yeah, there was one at the front door and a back door. Since that day, the, um, Mr. Ethan Gray and Ms., um, April Turner applied for a grant in the county's name and they received that grant to provide additional camera footage throughout the courthouse. Speaking with the sheriff as early as today, we do not have a policy or procedure for those security cameras. I was given a, uh, uh, public inquiry, a public records request as early as two months ago on footage at the courthouse. What I have to go with is my counsel to the left and he said, yes, you have to give it. Spoke to Sheriff Gray last week and Sheriff Gray has, um, some laws that say the courthouse is off limits to viewing. Um, so clearly we're not on the same page as that. It's not him and I are not on the same page. It's, it's, the system right now is not on the same page. And what we're asking to do is to make all of this in a resolution form, in which case, um, I've asked the sheriff and Mr. Ward, Charles, as well as any CTEST attorneys to come help us as far as are those cameras legal? To turn over to records request or are they not legal? There's a lot of First Amendment folks out there right now that, that film in courthouses and they, they go in and they ask for this footage. We just need to know what we're gonna do as a county. That's how we're gonna address that going forward. Um, and that was, I, I sent this to Charles and Charles said, I need to get over CTEST. I also spoke with Wesley Robertson at CTEST and, um, I read him the law and he said, I know the law. If you're going further, your county commission has the ability to make county law. Have y'all not done that yet? No, we haven't. That's where, that's why we're here tonight facing this. So I'll, uh, answer any questions you may have. This is not an end-all, be-all and, and will certainly change as commissions change, as mayor changes, as sheriffs change. Um, this is, this, but for right now, um, that's the best we came up with. Motion to move forward, man. Motion by Mr. Dorch. Discussion by, discussion, discussion after a second. Can I have a second on this?
Second.
Second by Ms. Taylor. Discussion's open.
Well, if either one of them want to talk, I'd like to spend the room, to make the motion, spend the room.
I'd have a, a motion by Mr. Gray to suspend the rules. Can I have a second on that? Second by Ms. Fields. All in favor say aye. Are there any opposed?
I don't really want to talk. I, I don't have much opposition to what you were saying, um, just some concerns. Some of them you touched on. Um, my big concern is just that it was, the cameras that we just got were obtained by grant funds. I wanted to make sure we don't interfere with that because they did pay for it. You know, we paid for it and they matched it. So I'm gonna make sure that's still intact, uh, number one. So I feel like that's something we probably need to look at, the parameters of the grant. I don't have it with me. We've had a long court date today, but, uh, another thing was just the key fobs. I mean, the process to how we do it. I personally don't want to be involved with it when I'm asked to give one to someone that, you know, isn't an employee of the building. I don't, I don't feel comfortable with it myself. Uh, so I would like to not be on that. That's what we do. So this is what this policy would be for. The public records concern too. Um, I've had attorneys ask me, you know, for things that happened in the hallway or things that happened in the parking lot. I've reached out to the public records council. I've not heard anything back. I emailed them September twenty-fifth, um, asking in point blank, are they open records? I've not heard a thing back. So, um, I think that just needs to be addressed. Frankly, I don't care what y'all decide, but if y'all do go with it, um, I just don't really want the responsibilities of it. You know, making key cards or reviewing the footage, like I just don't want to fulfill the request or have to go through with any of that, just personally. But, um, I would probably just say either table it or so we can discuss it further or whatever you guys would like to do. That's, those are just the issues that I kind of see. Uh, there's also TCA code ten-seven-five-oh-four that may need to be looked at. But like you said, you know, they might be contradictory, but I think we probably need to just look at these things before we go forward. That's it.
Thank you. That took, addressed that. Ms., um, Heather Morgan went completely through that contract today. The contract is only in Stewart County's name, so as far as us and the money aspect or you or Ms. Turner were simply the applicants on there, so it would not affect you in any way. So as far as the contract going forward, that's kind of, um, just if that makes you feel any better.
Fair enough.
Um, the key fob, they, it will be handled through our IT director. Um, we were not asking anybody to, I told the sheriff today and the sheriff reiterated the fact. We do not need to be in the key-making business. I do not need to be able to, this is not gonna be a me request or a you request or anybody request. That request will come through our HR department and go straight there. And his concern was very valid because when we have, uh, Ms. Turner was making keys, which she had been doing that since the rent come in and we understood that. And then Mr., uh, when I asked Mr. P. to do it, I immediately put two people in charge of, uh, a responsibility chain and that's not a good thing. So we want to streamline this and make it one person, um, is responsible type deal.
Yeah, I'm good. I just wanted to create my concerns.
This is gonna be a, a, a turning question. Would they, if you recorded footage from Florida, how would you have to, uh, get some guys?
I think so. I think some of it's subject to discovery, but I think some of it's subject just to public record. I think some of it could be excluded on security, but until we establish what is, what are we securing? Are we securing where officers come in and search a building? Are we securing layout of a building? You know, if we got that, you know, camera one, camera two, may, or X, Y, Z.
That's true.
We're just watching the public building. I don't, I don't think I can. I'm not saying I don't want to, but I just, but I don't see how we can. Somebody push.
Sure.
That's, so, but I do think if it's security footage, you know, but I mean, we have some judges that are on YouTube, so. That's, so. But I do think if it's security footage, you know, but, I mean, we have judges that are on YouTube, so. I mean, it's gonna be hard to argue that we're securing a courtroom when they're on YouTube, you know?
That's true.
If the security, if the security cameras are under the mayor's office, they'd have to request from them. If the security cameras is under the sheriff's department, they'd have to go through them to get the, to get. Yeah, they'd have to put the public record request in before discovery. You know, like, if they're in a crim-, like, an attorney, if they want a criminal case, they can file a.
And that's what the sheriff and I discussed today. They, it, the, the, the rotation of that footage, when, when, when that all comes down, needs to come. If, if it comes in my office, it needs to go to his office before being approved by our attorney. We have seven days to even get back with them on that, so that's not gonna be, it's not like it's gonna be, we have enough time to do that.
But if you're in charge of the cameras and the footage, does the sheriff part have to ask permission from you to see the footage? Because you're at, the county's actually in charge. It'd be just like a public record. Somebody's coming to ask for.
This, this, the sheriff's department is not after public records on those cameras. We've already, there's law that dictates that. He does not have to ask. He can, he, what, what I have proposed is to have a, um, camera, a, uh, viewing station, if you will. It doesn't need to be a station, but just a monitor, I guess, at the front door for our security guards. One at, um, somewhere, I forgot where the sheriff said, in the sheriff's office, and then one at dispatch. And I, I feel security-wise, if we're calling these security cameras, that's all that needs, security cameras. We have panic buttons all the way through the courthouse. Every office, if, if we're gonna start saying, number one, they're not open to public records, um, and then we got every Tom Pick and Harry in the courthouse looking at them every day, you're gonna have a real hard time dividing court at that.
Just to let you know, the panic button, the I T guy hit the one, the, uh, so I can see I'd go off in the front, and the city showed up forty-five minutes later, uh, with two officers.
The sheriff and I spoke about that too. Andy called me after that incident. That's the first I'd heard of it, and, um, the sheriff and I spoke on that very incident today. We're gonna have some, uh, I think he's gonna have some drills in the future coming up to address that very concern.
So, so that panic alarm, and I talked to his call about this when I put it in, it emails me personally. That's how it goes off. And so, if I don't check my email, so it's absolutely useless, you guys, so.
And that's something that we have to set up with, uh, that we're gonna have to address, because he, uh, Mr. P. told me that he was with you when y'all were going over, and then he had already gone when you called him and said, hey, the Dover police just showed up forty-five minutes later or whatever, and with this panic alarm. So, that's something we have to address. They got the same name of the email. I don't want to change.
Be able to, uh, phone, where it brings a phone, you know, like our security system, call, just like.
So, if I can, I'm, I'm sorry, no, but.
The reason you won't find a T C A code on courthouse security footage is because there is none. So, in Tennessee, the official in charge of courthouse security footage is not specified by a single T C A code. It can vary. This is because security foot, security recordings are generally not public record and are handled according to court policy, security protocols, and discovery rules, which would come in to be somebody who requests a section of security footage, subpoena, or a court order. Um, proper authority to contact is clerk of the court where the footage originated. Now, whether that be Ethan or myself in charge of it, that's not my choice. But that does come down to subpoenas being issued for that security footage. It, it's, courthouse security footage is exempt from public record. You won't find a T C A code on it. Um, uh, again, here's, in Tennessee, there is no single rule within Tennessee Rules of Criminal or Civil Procedure that names a specific individual in charge of the courthouse security footage. Maybe that's not worth in question here. It's how you go about getting the footage. It's, and I guess that comes down to you guys. Do you consider it open record, or do you not? Um, in Tennessee, it's generalized as it's exempt from that public record clause for the reason of, um, releasing security footage could reveal vulnerabilities in the courthouse's physical security, potentially making it easier for someone to exploit themselves, exploit the courthouse employees. Um, it's secured, uh, public access to the courthouse security footage would pose a significant risk to the safety of the judges, court staff, and witnesses that are within the courthouse. So, I think when you come to public, the public records request, think long and hard whether they are, because, well, whether they are given out as just a public records request, because there's more people in that courthouse than just the individual trying to find out your whereabouts, your movements, or Natalie, what time does she leave of the evening? What, you know, where does she go? I, I think it's a lot more than, than just who has control over the security of the courthouse regarding the footage, you know? The key fobs, I'm the one that has been generally doing them. I have an Excel spreadsheet on every key fob that, that I issued. I have an audit system. If this person is no longer there, this person keeps, his key fob is disabled. I, I'm not in the business of handing out key fobs to individuals that are not county employees. That's just my integrity of my position. Now, if, if, if that is handed over to Andy, I have no problem with that, but I will not be a part of it, you know, they can, they can move on down the line. Um, that's my position on it as someone that works in the court system. If you have any questions for me, uh, you know, if I can answer them, I'm happy to. Um, but I, I think it goes deeper than just who has physical control of being able to hand out the information.
I, I, I'm sorry. I, I, I really do kinda see like, I can see where people would want to, to have some of that information, but I also see people getting, uh, public records requests, uh, or, I'll switch, kinda like what you were saying, as a witch hunt. You know, what time is Natalie leaving for work? You know, where, all of that. I just see that some people in the community can use that footage just for witch hunts, you know?
So, so I absolutely agree with that a hundred percent. Their, their, Ms. Turner was quoting you the law, and, and then she tells you about the law, but the other side of that is, is there's tons and tons of court cases that have been documented right now, and Charles can back it up, that says video in the footage of the hallways is not considered security. Courtroom is considered security. Um, your, your rooms upstairs, maybe on the other side of Ethan's office where the jury might would go, or jury, or hallways, those are security, considered security. But security footage and, um, we may not have all security footage, and that's simply what the lawyers are saying right now. It's a public building. And, and while I was on the law enforcement side of it, no, I don't, I don't agree with, I wish we didn't have to. But, I mean, that's for something for the lawyers to determine. That's really not what we're, I mean, that, that's not, that putting out that footage is not the gist of this. The sher-, anything that happens between now and when the sheriff and I meet with lawyers will be my operation, my standard operation right now will be, if my office receives an open records request, that will go to Sheriff Gray. Sheriff Gray will approve it. It will go to Charles Parks for his final approval, and if he approves it, then we're gonna give it out.
And, and it was right, and if it's considering the courts, I'm gonna go to that clerk, or I'm gonna go to the judges, 'cause I don't wanna release something that jeopardizes a witness, a juvenile, because there's stuff that goes on in those courts that don't need to get out. And when people send in a public records, I don't think they can say, I want the front door camera. They're gonna have to say, I want this specific time, because I'm looking for this specific thing, you know, so I'm gonna, if it's up to me, I'm gonna deny, deny until we have a specific reason. 'Cause we get stuff all the time, 'cause people, tremendous, they don't need, you know, they have no reason, you know, and they may come after the county, but we'll just have to stand. She, I mean, she is right. There's something in the courts, you know, there, there's people, there's witnesses, there's stuff that's going on, criminal cases that could jeopardize my state or an employee, too, if there's people in the courthouse, so. You know, I don't, I don't wanna give out anything, but we don't have to.
And let me say this.
But we do have a First Amendment right, but we, you know, so, it's public.
And I will say this in all fairness. When I came into office, we had almost three million dollars, two points three or two point four million dollars in grants. Right now, this office is operating over seven million dollars worth of grants. I don't have time to go chasing footage and keys. This is not, this is not before you tonight because of anything I care about. But it's established that if it's ice out there, none of the officials have ever said anything. I, I got a text group. I text them, not smart to open up tomorrow, that, but we have to set a rock down somewhere and start writing on it. That's all, that, that, that's what I'm bringing for you tonight.
Yeah, you know, I guess my opinion is, I think we kinda go off in the weeds here on public records requests, because this, so this is really not even built for that. I mean, no matter who the custodian of this is, if there's a public records request for the footage, they need to work with the county attorney and the Office of Open Records Council beside this open pot. And that's, I'm like, who, I'm like, who does? But, but everything the government asks, open, unless there's a specific exception. I'm looking at a hundred twenty-five pages.
We're gonna continue to work on this. This is gonna be a working document as far as which, what open records and things like that goes. That needs to, to really revolve around the sheriff and his staff and Charles. I don't, I mean, it, it says my name on there for the simple reason that I told the sheriff he could have it all, and he looked at me like I was crazy. Um, so.
And I said, can we suspend the, let the sheriff, I think.
They're still suspended, okay.
I'd like to see what he recommends, what he thinks.
Well, I don't know. I'd say it is kind of a mess, like, I don't know what it is, but I don't, not really understand, but I know what I've read. I don't know what is public records or not in the hallways. I, I think I'm with Angel. I'll read something else. The only thing I'm sure, and like I say, it really doesn't change them, it's a court. And I know the mayor was talking about a guy who said he was gonna challenge somebody this because of the cameras. I know Channel Five, you know, that was brought up, that they can, the news come in court, but they have to submit something before the court requests come in, and they just can't come in. So, I, I feel confident about that footage in there not being open record. I think they're gonna have to subpoena that. The rest of it, I don't know. And I don't know, really know, uh, who needs the cameras. I feel confident that, uh, since Ethan's over at the court and, um, because I've been over at the court, they probably need cameras. They're very responsible. I don't know about anybody else in there needs it, so. I don't know. It, it's, it's a lot of things gonna be worked out. We can prove tonight, and that's sound, and work some of it. I think there needs to be some policies in place with that, because I don't, I'm like them. If you don't work at the courthouse, I don't think you, you know, I, I, I don't think you, you should have a fob. You know, you're coming in there for some other kind of things. And that's just, that's my opinion, 'cause I don't have a responsibility for that, 'cause I know what's gonna happen the first time something happens. Somebody's gonna get bit. I don't, I don't think it'd be me, but, uh, I, I don't have a problem with, I think H R needs to be handing out the, uh, fobs in. I think something we can work out, Mayor and I talked, it's not, it's not something we can sit down, right? Okay, we, we, we agree on, so, but I'm willing to, I'm willing to work with whoever on it. We'll, we'll get it straightened out. It's, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be straightened out in a few minutes, for me, it's.
I'm making a motion in a first, what you got?
We, we have a motion and a second. If, I'm still, is there any more discussion on this? At this time, I'd ask to unsuspend the rules.
Hello?
All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? You have a first and a second on the matter? Are there any more discussions? All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? So, tonight, uh, we have, uh, uh, number twenty will be the approval of the bi-monthly report, the agriculture extension services. That's in there already. Motion by Mr. Watson. Second by Mr. George. All in favor, say aye. And then you oppose? Thank you. Twenty-one surplus property.
Motion for approval.
By Mr. George. Second by Ms. Fields. All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? Twenty-two, new business. I'll just go over a short few things. Um, a lot of you seen a lot going on in the county. There's, we got parks popping up. We got, uh, pickleball courts going in. We got, um, I, I do wanna comment one thing. For those of you that came out to the fair, they did an excellent job in this, this year. Um, the rodeo, we were expecting fifteen hundred. Uh, we flew over two thousand, and I was still out there directing traffic at six-thirty, so, um, we seen probably around two thousand, twenty-two hundred. Um, so, our citizens are wanting to get out of the house and do stuff, and thank you guys for pitching in and helping them put that on. Uh, they did an excellent job with that. Other new business, um, I did get confirmation, and, uh, I want to let you guys know that I have the best, um, group of girls or ladies or whatever staff members at my office. Um, they do an excellent job. We went through a tough audit this year, and by tough audit, I mean tough audit. We had some departments that had to have some work-throughs, and, uh, they all came out okay. Um, we had some, um, we didn't. Um, Heather had some long nights. Um, but we will be, I don't know where the numbers are gonna fall, but we're gonna be one of the only five in the state this year that has three years consecutive clean audits. And, uh, that goes to your, your county department heads and this crew back here that does, um, just a phenomenal job. And, and I go back to saying, I asked Heather this, and, and it wasn't a me, this isn't a me thing. I'm just giving you a timeframe. When some of you have just come in this year as county commissioners, you come in the two point three, two point five million dollars worth of, uh, grants, and, and right now, you're sitting at seven million dollars, and we're gonna keep on, um, Heather giving me clearance finally, and we're about to dig right back in on a bunch of more grants, and we're gonna keep on giving back to the citizens without spending their tax dollars, just like we have been doing. So. Anybody got any new business?
I did. Was the influx of people moving in and bound over there. There's a lot of questions on private roads. One of the questions, are, are, are we governed by the county speed limit?
On private roads?
On pri-, private, private roads, do we have county speed limit set for gravel roads, uh, car and chip and paved roads? Are we governed with them speeds on a private road?
I, I don't think so. I, I think the sheriff, I wish he was still here. I think he could enforce if somebody was endangering lives, but I don't think we can enforce the speed limit on private. It'd have to be up to the H L A or the landowners that are using that road, I think.
Okay.
I mean, I have researched.
Which leads to the next question. Can a, a private road impose its own speed limit?
Yeah, I think the H L A could, or whoever owns it, whoever's implicated by that easement of that road is the deeds that are affected. I think they could join together and say, we got a free mile an hour speed limit. There ain't nothing, but, now, they would have to enforce it. I don't think they could make the sheriff, unless somebody's endangering the public. If somebody's going out there a hundred mile an hour, endangering other vehicles, and there's evidence of that, I think they could charge, I mean, Shane made. We want reckless endangerment.
Yeah, yeah. So, somebody just ripping them up and down the road after the pool.
If it's endangering other lives, I think, if you had evidence, I think you can get a reckless endangerment charge to the D A or the sheriff's office. I could be wrong, but I'm a prosecutor, but that's just mine.
Well, these are questions that I'm, I, I'm, I don't think. Getting asked by a lot of people.
Yeah, I don't think the county could enforce a speed limit per se, or set a speed limit on a private road.
But if the resident set a speed limit, and then you've got some more running once, race up, down the road in his big truck, can that be enforced? By the sheriff department?
I think if they had evidence of them racing up and down the road, and, and the sheriff or the D A felt like that was endangerment, yeah, possible.
'Cause there is folks out there that know some of these are private roads, and, and they just, yeah, they do whatever they wanna do, when they wanna do it.
I think reckless endangerment is.
Now, what I wanna know is, are people entitled to law enforcement out there or not?
Like, if they just get, if they have something to go home and.
Come on, just say it. It, it's a free for all. I have a bunch of these roads. People ask me, I say, I don't know, call sheriff department.
I think on the road, the road issue itself.
But I'm here asking for questions tonight, so maybe they're watching, and they don't know what the recourse is. But I'm here asking for questions tonight, so maybe they're watching and they don't know what the recourse is on whatever.
I recommend them get it up to county specs, like county adopter.
I recommend you be.
I don't think we could, I don't think we could. I really don't. And I could be wrong. I've been wrong before.
But that is my question. Are we entitled to law enforcement to slow down some of these people acting a fool?
I think that's.
Now, you're, you're the legal people, so I might have.
I think if they're endangering the other public citizens, possible. But I still feel like they're moving a very area of civil and criminal because it's private property. Let me ask you a question. What if they're the only one on the road? Then they're not. And they're not endangering them. So, I mean, I think it's free for them to go a hundred mile an hour. Well, because they say, because it's private property. If the other landowners want to take out civil actions, that might be an option. If the other landowners around that are being affected by their, you know, going a hundred mile an hour, they could possibly take out some kind of civil action as effective deed on the deed.
Now, I do think legally, if you want to in a private road, you can put speed bumps going down through there. So either they're going to be jumping them or they're going to be tearing up their stuff. But there's nothing to say you can't put speed bumps going down through that, down that road either.
There is like a uniform, uh, highways, traffic controls, something like that, organization that they could all join up and they give them like guidelines. I mean, they could look into it. Things called the uniform control. It's something about roads or private entities, like subdivisions that want to have similar to county, uh, signs and stuff like that. They can buy it through that.
Not tonight. I seen it firsthand while I was sitting in this driveway, they cut loose somewhere.
What I'm getting here is that there's not much recourse for anybody who lives on a private road in this county.
Not on the government's name.
I'll, I'll say, you slowed one of my employees down on your road. He says, you, you're, you're mayor out there, saying out there is a cup of coffee saying, when I go by, he slowed down.
He looks for me every day.
He does.
Lord knows, I'm out there hollering out of my mouth.
Guys, do we have any more new business coming forward?
Um, mayor, I wait, I just want, I just want, I know you already said about, about the, uh, fair, but also mentioned, you know, that moving wall was a pretty big deal for us too, I think.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, they did a really good job of that. That wall, a lot of times booked way out and, uh, Mr. Fred Shaw, Mr. Don Bailey got on top of that when we discussed it and they jumped all over it and it was a, it was a big hit. They had fought a little bit of weather, but, uh, the ceremony, I thought the ceremony was great. And, uh, the amount of people that I seen Saturday, I didn't, I wasn't able to see like Sunday, but Saturday was good. We want to keep on having those tightly events, um, as much as we can now that we got parts down there in a, in a few.
Motion to do a journey.
Motion by Mr. George, taken by Ms. Fields. All in favor say aye.